Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Bettendorf for our special city council meeting here for the presentation of our fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Belczynski.
Here.
All right, thank you all for joining us. And now we will turn over our presentation to our city administrator, Mr. Decker Plain, and our director of finance, Mr. Jason Shat. Gentlemen, thank you for all of your hard work, as well as the department heads and the staff in finance for putting together a budget that covers those priorities that we went through in our strategic planning session, and listens to the public and their desire to have continued increase in fire protection services, as well as the other things that you guys have done. So, thank you very much for your esteemed and your esteemed colleagues for great work. You have the floor. Tell us what you did.
Thank you, Your Honor. Why don't I start off, Your Honor. So, our budget presentation that we did back in February outlined what we're going to do with $118 million across all of our funds. We, as you know, this format tonight is different than what we've had in the past. This is a requirement of the state now to have additional public hearings, and we have people in the crowd, which is, I think, part of what that whole process was about. So, we're glad that they're here so they can hear what we're going to be doing. But this, it demonstrates our financial strength and our flexibility. It responds to an extraordinary decrease in the rollback that we've never seen before since 1979, legislative property tax reductions, and the challenge of our soaring costs that we talked about with you in our work session. This really concentrates on strengthening our commitment to public safety. It secures the funding long-term of the SAFER grant, which, as you know, we received a $2 million grant to fund six firefighters, but that's only for a three-year period. And what we have to do to honor that grant is agree that we will fund those positions on infinitum. And so, we told you at the time of the budget that we thought that would require at least 36 cents over a three-year period, and our budget recommends that. We made a presentation to you that we could do that over three years, or we could do it all at once, and the recommendation now is to try to accomplish that all at once. All of the firefighters have been hired. They are not all on board yet, but we are staffing now all three stations with a minimum of three and usually four, so 12 guys per shift, 12 people per shift, since we hired a new female firefighter last week as part of the hires. And that is the primary focus of this. We'll go into, there are a couple of other positions that we're adding, and the proposed levy rate then is $13.11 per $1,000, or 46 cents in the 24-year fiscal budget. And I think it's important to note that that 46 cents was either going to take place in this budget, or it's going to take place over three budgets, but either way, it has to take place to honor the SAFER grant in order for us to, we agreed we would accept that funding, and when we did that, we said we would guarantee that the firefighters would be with us forever. So, it was either going to be over a three-year period or over a one-year period, and the recommendation now is to do it over a one-year period. I'm going to turn it over to Jason. He did all of the work, as you know, and they did all of the work to get us ready for here. And then, we can talk about the impact to individual properties, because there are some differences that occur through property assessed valuations that have changed that cause it to, for some people, about 35% of our community, they'll actually see a property tax reduction, and about 65% could see a property tax increase. So, let's have Jason walk you through all the things that we did to get here. Thank you. Talk loud, because not everybody can hear you. All right. Yes, we are at, nearing the culmination of what has been about a six-month process so far in formulating this budget. My first introduction to the department heads and for their input on the budget happened last September. We went through council's goal setting in October. We've been through several budget work sessions on capital and operating through November, December, January, and February. So, there is a lot of work that has taken place to get us to where we are. As Decker said, the proposed levy rate, which we will hold the public hearing on tonight, is $13.11 per thousand. That's a 46 cent increase over the current year's budget. However, I want to really reiterate that the levy rate is just one component of three in the calculation of a property tax bill, and an increase in the levy rate does not necessarily equate to an increase in property taxes on an individual property, and we'll talk through that with a couple of slides going forward. As Decker introduced, the 46 cent increase funds, fully funds six firefighters that are now being paid for with a SAFER grant, but come three years from now, we will need to have them fully funded within the budget. In order to do that, you need 36 cents over the next three years. You can do it all at once, or you can do it over three years. I think the recommendation right now is to let's grab that all at once. We also added an additional dime to take us to 46 cents. So, what do you get for 46 cents? Well, first, you get the fully funded firefighters. That was important to us all. We have some upgrades, three upgrades of officers to sergeant in the police department. Again, that commitment to public safety. We're going to add a full-time fire marshal, a separate position, separate from firefighter. Again, commitment to public safety. We'll also add some staff at the library and bring back the parks director position that has been kind of absorbed through the culture and recreation director position for the last few years. So, those are new additions. We'll also provided funding for previously existing positions that were already funded in the budget, building maintenance tech, exhibit tech, and public relations assistant in our communications department. So, as I said, that requires 46 cents on the levy rate. That's an increase in the levy, not necessarily an increase in an individual person's tax bill, but certainly up for consideration tonight. Bettendorf remains among the most affordable when you look at the cost of owning an average home in comparable cities, and I have about 21 cities here on the chart, all with populations of 24,000 or more around the state of Iowa. If you take away the debt service levy and look at operating costs alone, Bettendorf is the lowest cost among the comparable group. So, I think that's important to point out. I think we provide an incredible level of service and a great value for citizens for the cost that we ask of them. This is how the levy rate will change from the current fiscal year in this second column in the table. I do have in the middle column there, the plus 22 cents. That was the scenario where we tried to piecemeal in the SAFER grant funding over three years, but to the far right, we'll see the plus 46 cents. The city can levy taxes in a couple of different ways. First is the general fund, and we levied $7.80 there in the current year. The property tax legislation that was passed and adopted last year actually will automatically reduce our general fund levy each year depending on how our property values grow. So, the general fund levy will be reduced to 765, but we can come back and make up for some of that loss through some of these other levy rates. We can levy for health insurance. We can levy for liability insurance, the police and fire pension, transit service, and then obviously our debt service levy at 485 that helps to fund all of the capital projects that happen throughout town. So, in total, we'll be moving from 1265 to 1311, council passed the budget with a 46 cent increase. The impact on a residential property, and I'll draw your attention to the bottom table here. The top table is at 22 cents, but we're talking 46 cents tonight. There are really three levers involved when we are calculating a properties tax bill, and it starts off with the assessment that happens basically a year ago, 18 months ago. Assessed values in Bettendorf, on average, increased about 17% for residential property. And that, that factor alone would have increased an average, a mean valued home, valued now at 318,000. That increase in valuation would have increased their taxes by about $317. But then there's the second factor, and that's the residential rollback, which is dictated by the state. The rollback was reduced from 54.65% in the current year to 46.34% for the budget year. So, we're only going to tax 46% of that growth. Taxable value on the average home in Bettendorf, the average existing home, actually decreased by about 1%. So, you're taxed on less of the home, less of your home's value than you are in the current year. That basically wiped away all of the increase from valuation. So, the rollback takes away $335, so we're about at zero. And then our levy rate change is the third and final factor in the calculation. If we increase 46 cents to 1311, that would add $66 to this tax bill. So, the net increase on this average home, which is valued at $318,000, is about 48 bucks, 2.6% for the year, and it funds all of those things that we talked about, especially those important things in public safety. However, I would also point out that many, as Decker mentioned, will pay less. About 35% of our residential properties will pay less taxes, and it all has to do with not your valuation, but how much your valuation increased or changed from the year before. So, those that saw an increase of about 15% or more are likely to pay a little bit more. If your property increased less than 15%, you're likely going to pay less taxes next year than you are this year. We have a pretty handy tool available on the website, and I think we'll be happy to share it here tonight. You can punch in your address. It'll take you to a page that looks, has this in the bottom left-hand corner. It's a property tax estimation tool specific to your address if you put it in there, and it just shows you what your taxes are for the current year at 1265. Now, these are city taxes only. We all know the schools levy taxes, the county levies taxes, there's a couple of other minor taxing entities that create your tax bill. So, city taxes only, and you'll see the change year over year at the different levy rates. This particular house is at $1,577 property taxes in the current year. With a 46 cent increase, that would go up just about, what, 17 bucks to 1,594 for the following year. So, and then this is just where we are in the current budget calendar. We have done our informational meetings. We've done our Saturday budget workshop. We had a special meeting presenting the budget to the public. We've made notification of this public hearing, and we are holding it tonight. There will be notification of a second public hearing going out next week, and that final public hearing will take place on April 16th, and that is where council will finalize and adopt the budget and the levy rate. There's actually no council action necessary tonight, other than to hear what the public has to say. That's fine. I think one city's line. Oh, yeah. I'm asking him to pull up that slide comparison to the other, your slide.
My slide, my favorite slide.
Your slide.
Oh, my golly.
It's in here somewhere.
There you go. 17% if you haven't done the math to move to Davenport.
So, what we've done here is just taken that mean Bettendorf home, the $318,000 home, and placed it in a couple of cities around Quad Cities. So, from the top to bottom, you have a city of Bettendorf, Bettendorf Schools. Now, these are total taxes, including city, county, schools, and everything else. Total taxes today? Yep. Right? Not with the increases? About $5,450. If you're in the PV district, you pay just a little bit more, $5,635, again, current year. That same home in Davenport, in the Davenport School District, would pay $6,616, so $1,200 more than Bettendorf Bettendorf. In Moline, $9,118, and in Rock Island, over $10,000. So, the, we often hear the critique that taxes are high in Bettendorf, and I think this just goes to show that that's not necessarily true. It's all depending on property values and things of that nature, so.
Jason, you're using slides from the State of the City address. Where could we find these slides if we were interested in viewing them?
I believe they're all available on the city's website.
They are.
You can see a video of the State of the City on the city's YouTube channel, and you can see.
There's a link on our website to get to that, too.
Perfect.
Yeah, so just go to the website. You'll find all of this stuff. I saw some folks taking pictures, and they can just pull it up on their phones right now. Perfect. Anything else you wanted to add, gentlemen?
Not for us, Your Honor, unless the council has questions for us. You've been through this a couple of times with the budget work session that we did on Saturday in February, and the public notices and public meetings that we've had so far. Unless the council has a specific question for us, we did not choose to go into the 40 slides or 50 slides that we did during the budget session. We just thought that would be too much for, people's eyes would blaze over, I think. So.
Hit the highlights, and we appreciate that. So, any questions? I look to my left. Questions from council? To my right, questions from council. Nick, do you have a question? Okay. Then, let's move to our public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
We did receive a couple emails that everybody has seen. Any other written correspondence with regard to this public hearing?
No.
And those correspondence weren't with regard to the public hearing, but they were on point for the issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item, you can do so by approaching the podium in the back. We'd like to hear from you. Please try to be respectful in your comments and refrain from any outbursts if you would like to tell us what you think about the budget as presented. We'd like to hear from you. Please state your name and your address before your comments. We are open.
It was a back?
Yep, the back podium. And if you'd like to speak, and you want to kind of move that direction now, it looks like we have our first speaker. That way, you can be ready to go as soon as his comments are finished.
I only hope I'm in the 35%, but that doesn't change my message here.
Okay, we can take a look. Let's have your name and address first.
My name is John Prieto. I reside at 1360 Kimberly Ridge Road, Bettendorf, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. While it's understandable that our city, as our city grows, so does the need for services, especially for the firefighters and police. But unlike the city, the residents do not have the option to tax others to help pay our bills as they rise due to consequences beyond our control. It's been reported through national statistics that over 60% of our nation's citizens are borrowing against their credit cards just to stay afloat. Many of those citizens are our neighbors here in Bettendorf. All of us in this room are charged with the responsibility to live within our means concerning our household budgets. When our costs go up, we are forced to make cuts, especially those of us who do not have the option to go out and find another job to make ends meet. I urge the city administrators to diligently look for ways to make our tax dollars stretch and institute other cuts in the budget before asking residents to produce money we cannot afford. If actions have already been taken, I ask we at least share the burden and lower the proposed hike that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. Anybody else wish to be heard? Come up and give some comments for a couple of minutes. We'd like to hear from you. Name and address first, please.
My name is Matt Mead, and I live at 3624 Greenbrier Drive. I know there are a lot of numbers being thrown up here. They look minuscule, so much per thousand dollars, so much per hundred dollars. But when you have a parent, like my mother over here, that owns her home and sees nothing but increase after increase, year after year, in her tax dollars, and her income doesn't change, it doesn't continue to go up, I feel that the city is putting people at risk on the edge of their stairwells and trying to kick them somewhere else. And I don't think that is in the best interest of any city or town or people in general. It's, it seems like a little, but it seems like a little every year after year after year. And I think there are other things that the city can do, along with businesses, to help relieve that burden from those at risk of being out of their homes due to restricted incomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else wish to be heard? Glenn.
Hey, good evening. Glenn Dugan, 5736 Butterfield Court. Just a question and a curiosity, if anyone knows, we all see a lot of homes going up in Bettendorf, a lot of homes, and a general question of, do we, do we know what kind of percentage increase in property tax revenue there is, let's say, last year to this, compared to the increase in percentage-wise of city costs to run the city? Any idea how they compare?
So, I will start just a minute and let you kind of gather your thoughts. We are averaging about 150 or more single-family or duplex homes each year. That growth is awesome, but the problem is, last year's change from the state legislature allows us to capture only a small portion of that growth. It's a complicated formula, and this year, I think, we're just under 3% of the allowable growth we're able to capture. That doesn't, in my opinion, get us to paying for the services, but Jason, if you want to take a stab?
No, thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if I can answer the question directly, but I'd love to, love to talk more. We do know, in relation to that growth, usually the growth makes up between 50 and 80% of the new tax dollars each year. So, new tax dollars from, or new tax dollars from existing property is really a very small portion of the total new dollars that come to the city. I hesitate to throw a percentage at you tonight, but certainly something I can give for you.
Then, it sounds like the expenses to run the city are outweighing the percentage of revenue gained from new construction.
That's correct, yes.
By, is it comparable, double? Any idea?
No, I, again, like if, you know, new, new property taxes from existing property makes up maybe 20% of the new revenue. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Shank, and I live at 3508 Greenbrier, and thank you for your question, because that was really pretty much my question as well, because we do have new homes going up, therefore more taxes coming in. However, I'm wondering about other businesses. I know sometimes businesses are allowed to come in and not pay taxes for a while, so I'm wondering how much of that is happening. And also, I'm reading recently about, people are concerned about the drivers, and this is a very small thing, so it's not going to make that great of a difference, but money being spent on a social media campaign rather than actually enforcement of our laws for drivers that are speeding and driving recklessly around town. And so, I mean, I think that there are a lot of things Bettendorf does for us, and I appreciate a lot of what is done, but I'm just thinking that there are other things that we might look at to pull back some of that money that may not be going for the best, being used in the best way. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Do you have the list of the things? Here.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we have the list.
Your Honor, let's let them talk, and we, yep. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item for public hearing? You can approach the podium, state your name and address. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and in response to, let's see if we can cut, we also, as a council, posed that question to staff, department heads, and finance, and this is the response that we received. And Jason, why don't you walk us through kind of some of the things that you all have done in an effort to at least maintain, if not reduce, costs and find efficiencies?
Sure. And this is not a complete list, but it's about as much as one can fit on a PowerPoint slide, even in a small font. But we do a lot of things, and cost reduction is, and cost efficiencies are always on the mind of everyone at that table. Interns and seasonal staff, rather than filling, you know, taking on regular or full-time staff so we can kind of flex up and down as, as the demand is needed. We have closed facilities. Family museum and the library are now closed on Sundays. We do, you know, native Nomo areas in parks and at the golf course, reduce chemical applications to save a lot of money there. A lot of virtual training opportunities, which is kind of a good result from the pandemic is there's ample opportunities for training and learning remotely. Again, web-based training, one-to-one devices is a, is an IT initiative that we've taken on over the past couple of years to reduce the number of IT assets that we have per employee. We have automatic aid agreements with other fire departments to, you know, get the help we need in the event of a major incident. We are constantly looking at ways to save money in the employee benefits area. We've moved our pharmacy insurance administration to Wellmark to take advantage of some better discounts. We have a wellness committee that's looking at the plan all the time and finding ways to enhance, enhance the plan while reducing costs. In Public Works, I think there's some really cool things around snow removal that maybe aren't that exciting, but our liquid snow and ice control has saved many, many tons of solid salt being used on the roads at a, at a pretty expensive rate. We have added mid-mount wing plows so that the plow trucks can actually cover more road in one pass and can get more done in less time. We've done a lot of LED lighting. We've done HVAC work to get rebates. Our buildings are very energy efficient. There was a lighting project at the waterfront convention center, which the city owns. Initial quotes for, initial estimates for completing that project were about $750,000. Brian and his team got on it and got it done for, I think, less than $150,000. So, we are constantly working to reduce costs and find ways to get this, the valued work that I think we do, done for as least, least expensively as possible. Put this slide up about the soaring cost. Your Honor, there's a slide that we showed you in the budget scenario about, one of the gentleman mentioned, the budgets that they're stuck with, with frozen incomes. These are the costs that have changed since COVID on equipment that we have to buy to perform our operations. So, in 2010, we bought a single-axle dump truck for $96,000. We're replacing that today at $237,000. That's after Brian has taken the box off the chassis and ran that. A number of those trucks are now in their 15th or 16th year. We've extended the life on almost every one of our vehicles with the vehicle committee to try to get better costs. We're replacing a 2015 pickup. They're now $60,000. Pickup with a dump truck, about $115,000. The sewer vectors, we have two of them. We bought them 10 years ago for $320,000. They're now $650,000 apiece. As you know, we have a fire apparatus that we're replacing. We bought it 23 years ago for $580,000. It's now at $2 million, and we had to pay some of that upfront, and we won't get it for another.
Three years.
Third, three years.
Three years.
So, these are, when, when folks talk about the costs that we're associated with, these are the kinds of things that we're facing. Our liability coverage has gone up, and we're going up about 25 to 30%. Our health insurance, even though we're managing it much better, about 20%, and we've secured four-year contracts with our bargaining units in the 3% range, when 5% was the going rate. So, our vehicles and our equipment are exceeding 10%, 10% at least annually, and these, in order for us to do these tasks, we need the these, in order for us to do these tasks, we need this equipment to make that happen. So, and, and, you know, uh, we all talked about the cost of outfitting the firefighters and the police officers. Um, each one of the radios that the police and fire carry are roughly five thousand dollars. Fortunately, in our partnership with Scott County, we're now part of that consortium, and the county, um, bought the radio system with us, so that they've picked up that cost. But, um, those are the kinds of cost increases that we've, we've encountered. So, um, these are part of the problems we had as we created the budget. How do we buy all these pieces of equipment to do the things we have to do? Again, those sewer vectors are now ten years old. Um, the life on those is about ten years. We'll try to stretch that till they start to really nickel and dime us, but that, those are what the costs that we're, we're, we're kind of replaced and stuck with, so.
Anything else from you two gentlemen on your presentation?
I would just encourage everybody to, uh, visit the website, uh, check out the different, uh, slideshows and videos we have on the budget, and, and punch your address into that, um, calculator and, and see how the, the levy rate change affects your property, because again, a, an increase in the levy rate does not necessarily equate to an increase in your tax dollars. And, and we'd be willing, Your Honor, we'll stick around afterwards, and we'll punch in everybody's address who's willing to give it to us and show them what that changes, uh, right here, so we can, they can understand what the impact to them is. On city taxes only, we can only speak for our city taxes, and again, with a couple of cobbie ads, we don't know if they filed for their homestead exemption, we don't know if they're veterans, those sorts of individual play, but we can give them a pretty good calculation of what the forty-six cents does to their individual property.
That would be probably on the high side, because you're right, you're not in the calculator. It doesn't have the function to say the military tax credit or the, it, so you know it's gonna come down if you're military, homestead, and other credits that you get as a result of some of the legislation that increased those credits last year.
Correct. I don't know if any council members have
Council members that have questions?
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norman.
How many cities in Iowa, if we know roughly, were at the maximum levy going into this year?
All but three, and now it's two.
Probably five or six.
Let me see if I have that in here. Not sure I have that slide.
Can you explain that, too, for the public?
So, under the, under the law, the maximum levy any city can have is eight dollars and ten cents.
In their general fund.
In their general fund, which is the main fund of the city and where police and fire, uh, function out of. So our levy rate a year ago was in the five
Seventy-two.
Five seventy-two range. But because we saw what was gonna happen at the legislature last year, we adjusted our levy rate up and moved everything into the general fund levy because of the growth factor cap that was going to occur at the state to try to give us the most dollars we could get by making that maneuver. Those cities that were at their eight-ten could not make that maneuver. Um, and in some cities, uh, like Davenport, for example, um, levies were taken away from them, the library levy, uh, rate and, uh, uh, was it, not transit? Emergency, emergency levy. Um, those were taken away by the state. So they're gonna have to either cut services, or they found growth perhaps in the commercial sector. I'm not sure how they've dealt with that, but almost every city is in a much worse position than we're, than we're in. We're able to be able to pick up those services. I'm not sure what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I think a point of pride for years, excuse me, of staff members, um, requesting either personnel or equipment, and, and there's been a point of running the city Bettendorf on a very lean manner, and there's, you're in a little bit of a paradox here, because that, some of that leanness may now be coming back to cost us in one way, shape, or form, right? You're almost penalized for being a lean operation.
That's, that's exactly what happened.
A hundred percent.
That's exactly what happened.
Typically, like Glenn indicated, we would be potentially and probably in a position where if we were able to capture that growth, because I don't know how many cities are growing like seventeen, eighteen percent like the city of Bettendorf is, I think that was a really great point that we discussed during our budget hearing, is left to our own devices, if local control were still present here, we'd be able to talk about how much we were reducing this levy.
Exactly.
Is that fair?
That would be very fair.
So it, it seems like the State House is doing a one-size-fits-all solution, and there are communities like Bettendorf who've been really lean that are now positioned where we're not able to capture growth, and we've set a standard for service, where everybody loves the, the fact that we can drive through with, and not have potholes on every arterial, and that the snowfall is cleaned, you know, virtually as it hits the ground. But that one-size-fits-all, so it seems like state's looking good. Now, all of a sudden, we've gotta justify what we're doing and how we're doing, and we're sitting here struggling to try to make those ends meet.
And, and remember that the state, eight years ago, uh, enacted a policy of taking all commercial residential property, that is apartment buildings over fourplexes, um, where they were taxed at ninety percent of their value. They changed the way those properties were taxed, and they're now taxed at the same rate as residential property, even though they're commercial ventures. And I think that roughly cost us about a million dollars a year in revenue that, uh, from that switch, and that was from a lobby from the landlords association, primarily around the three university cities, uh, that were able to get the legislature to change those classification types, and, and obviously, none of those rents were reduced. But those are the kinds of, of changes at the state level that have impacted our ability to deal with that growth and deal with those services.
Right, well, and you know, and like, uh, Mr. Mead said, others may not know, but my mom's at Thomas Place, and, and she's ninety-one and a half, and she is simply, every increase, every, you know, they took away their bulk cable, and every increase thirty or thirty-five dollars is, might as well be on three thousand to her. So I'm funding a lot of those things, and we feel every, every bill. And I think this council collectively gets that, too, that I, I think what, I, I hope people, and we're so grateful to see people in the room, hope people understand how hard it is to deliver a consistent level of service and do things that are not gratuitous, and then even economic development, I think people have a, maybe a misunderstanding of how much, why are they giving money to TBK when in fact TBK, maybe Jeff, at a, if now we're, you know, in the future, a long way, the economic engine that that's become so that we can garner some growth to try to fight every day to keep these services affordable. I think there's a lot going on, and the dialogue, you know, can start today, but it certainly won't end.
Yeah, I'm happy to oblige. Thank you, Councilmember Norman. So I'll just, I'll give a, for example, next door, we have the Bridges Apartments, for example, the Bridges Lofts, and if, I, I think everyone here has a historical perspective of the Twin Bridges Motor Inn and what it had become. And we were met with a developer there who chose to incur that property and demolish it and redevelop it into the site today. There was a benefit to the city on a number of fronts. It cut our police and fire calls down by probably seven to nine hundred a year. Um, we did have children going to our school district that were actually residing in that property, so there was the ancillary benefits. But the, the question is more relative to the, the contribution of tax dollars, if you will, or not allowing them or having them pay taxes. In a scenario like that, the developer chose to take that project on, that burden on, if you will, demolish a property and redevelop it. He agreed to still pay the amount of tax, taxes that were being paid. The assessed value that was there, that gentleman chose to, through an agreement with us, still pay that amount. So I believe at the time, the Twin Bridges was assessed at about seven-hundred thousand dollars. And when that property owner paid his taxes, uh, it would be on seven-hundred thousand. That developer then, who came in, still paid the taxes on that amount of money, and then the city chose to rebate him any growth, any new taxable value, his tax dollars back. So in a case like that, we saw the intangible benefits of having children living in a healthier environment, less police and fire burden, and obviously, the fact that we created downtown living for new residents in Bettendorf, which is a great thing. But we rebated him back property taxes that he paid above the value that had been established there at the Twin Bridges Motor Inn. And that's a very simplistic, um, quick explanation of how that works. We did the same where the lodge site was, a very similar type of agreement, because again, that property became a nuisance property, and the end game, again, pay the base value, what was there is what they paid taxes on. Anything new that they created, there was a rebate provided to them because they took that on and became, created a new, new development there that generated more.
Plus, plus, Your Honor, the, the debt service levy on that property
Gets paid.
Would have, generates probably about fifty thousand dollars a year in additional taxes just from the debt service levy, so
Because it's now much more expensive.
Much, much more expensive, and, and the, the developer doesn't get to capture that.
Right.
So that property is generating probably, let's say, sixty to seventy thousand dollars more than it did, um, by virtue of the new development, and when fully developed and comes online, it'll pay taxes in the twenty-five, thirty million dollar range. So the city still gets, even though the primary source of property tax they, is rebated to them, there's still a strong ancillary benefit, um, to that kind of development, and it gives us such a quality development in our, in our downtown compared to what was there.
Right. Anything else? Okay, uh, Mr. Norman?
Uh, I guess I do have a question about the, the rollback in the forty-six cents of taxable value, and even if we didn't change the levy, it, it was my understanding that there wasn't really much of a, I, I mean, it seems like Netflix rates are going up more than what people would actually garner in, in tax savings, is, is, if I recall that.
Right. Because of that rollback, which again, reduced, let's see if I can find a good slide. Maybe this is the one. So the, the rollback reduced taxable value so much that, like I said, on, on existing properties, not the new construction, but existing properties, taxable value was down about a percent on average. So that alone, uh, would reduce a person's tax bill, uh, with no change to the levy, no, you know. But I think the, the slide we have here is, taken together all of these things that have come along from the state over the past ten or so years, have reduced, um, the percent of the, the taxable value as a percent of assessed value. We used to count on about sixty-two percent as taxable, uh, across all property types, and now that's down to fifty-one percent. It's equal to about three-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars in value, or three million in potential property taxes, not that we were gonna go grab, but that were available to us just through the valuation. And to your, uh, earlier point, uh, Councilmember Norman, we now have less opportunity to access, uh, that valuation because of the different, um, mechanisms that the state has put in place, um, to reduce valuation, uh, no matter how much it grows.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Councilmember Sacksler.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. As a follow-up to, uh, the tiffs in the, in hotels, in addition, those new hotels are generating hotel motel tax, uh, which the new hotels have far more hotel motel tax generated than the old lodge was generating for us.
That's, I mean, that's, that's true, based on what's going on at TBK. As you know, we had, um, we incented the property to demolish the, the, uh, old lodge or old Jumers, uh, and two new hotels are up there. And, um, we, we do have more hotel motel tax revenue. We are getting more sales tax revenue. Our gaming revenue is actually pretty flat, and we do not get any of the gaming revenue from online or, or betting, sports betting. Uh, legislature didn't allow us to change that, so, um, our gaming revenue is, is slowly going down. So those have been some changes that have been both good and bad as we, as we wrangle with all of this.
Yes, Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last, uh, person who spoke to us this evening raised a point about a social media campaign, and I just wanted to respond to that for just a moment, if I could. The question was whether the city is spending fifty thousand dollars on a social media campaign. It's not. There was some confusion on a Nextdoor app about that, where a person posted that the city was doing that, and it is not. When I've talked about social media campaigns, what I'm talking about is talking to people on the Nextdoor app, talking to people on Facebook, getting paper, newspaper stories, like what started all of that in the Quad City Times, getting stories, uh, on Channel Six or Channel Eight, having the mayor do a mayor's message on the need for people to be aware of traffic regulations and to obey traffic regulations. That doesn't cost anything other than perhaps the mayor's time or, uh, staff's time to, to do the video for these kinds of things. The fifty thousand dollars is a grant from the state to pay for overtime for police officers to do more traffic enforcement. So for the people who say we aren't spending enough actual police time stopping speeders or stopping people who are running red lights, or a lot of the conversation dealt with people using the turn lane on these three-lane roads of Forest Grove or, uh, Tanglefoot, uh, for people who say that we aren't spending enough effort in that respect, that fifty thousand dollars is dedicated solely to that purpose. The city is not spending any money on social media, and I just wanted to make that clear, because there was some confusion over the weekend. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Adamson, did you have something? I thought you were getting my attention.
He just took care of it.
Okay. Councilmember Palsinski, did you have anything that you wanted to ask about?
No, thank you, Your Honor. I just appreciate all the staff's hard work on putting all this information together. This is, it's, it's incredibly valuable for, uh, the council as well as the constituents, um, and appreciate everybody joining today, even though I'm coming to you digitally.
It's okay, we understand. Okay. Well, then, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, we will stick around and
Yeah, yeah.
If anybody wants to
Put it in there, we won't put it on the screen. You'll just see it on your small screen, and you'll see if your taxes are going up or down, or remaining about the same.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned. Good work, people. Thank you again. Thanks to the department heads, your staffs, finance, and
Thanks to you guys, too.
Folks who put this together, we do appreciate it.